Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, I'd like to make a quick comment. As everybody probably knows, or most people, we just can, we just got a recall vote concluded on Monday. And I think most people are glad that it's over. I know we are. So what I, what I'd like to say is, as the Chair of the Commission, I'm very pleased with the outcome of the elections. Your people have spoken. Morville County has a bright future. And I hope now we all come together to build a great place for ourselves and our children. And hopefully, I'd like to, this is the last thing we talk about, the recall, and really move forward. And, and we do have a bright future here. So that's it, to me. Does anybody else have anything they want to say? Next up is our public comment time. This is a time for people to, in the audience and online on Zoom, to make comments about things that aren't on the agenda. This is just a general comment about county business. The rules are, you'll get three minutes. And we ask that you be civil and no personal attacks. So with that, I'll open it up and say, is there anybody in the room that has a public comment that they would like to make? About business that's not on the agenda. Okay, is there anybody on Zoom? Please raise your hand if you have anything you would like to say in the comment time. Well, so anybody use that?
No.
Okay. All right. Our next up would be our open agenda. Does either of the Commissioners have anything they'd like to add to?
Well, I guess that I'll propose that we put on the agenda the resolution that Matt passed out for us this morning to consider to declare a wildfire emergency.
Okay.
If I could just provide an update on the fires along with that action. And then also at the end, let you know what happened at the CDA.
Okay. Do we want to put that as D?
So D is the resolution?
Resolution, okay.
Matt, it's update E, and then F, might update.
E is the update on CDA?
F would be CD. E would be Matt's.
Yeah.
Matt's was.
Yeah, let's, if it's okay, let's, we can combine D and E on that.
Well, E, Matt is Matt's update on. Or fire update.
Fire update and resolution for declaration of the, we can see.
F is just. Okay, then we'll jump into our business items. Our first item is the discussion with Penland Lake Corporation. Who's leading that? Matt, are you leading that?
Well, if you'd like to come up to the discussion board, what, what we have is, the Yumitala National Forest has, for several years, been exploring possibilities for revegetation of certain areas that are in our county. At times, they've asked for public input and such, and we have some interested parties to come to present to the county and provide some input from their, their perspective on the impacts of the, of the proposed road closures and, and revegetation plans. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself to the Commission.
I'm Curtis Cuthbert. We're here representing Penland Lake Corporation on the President. Let Sandra introduce her.
I'm Sandra Rice, and we're here for the corporation and for our Penland Lake Firewise community. Two separate entities.
Welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Why don't you just go ahead and tell what's on your mind?
Over the last several years, you know, we've been taking care of them in as best we could, using grants from the government to thin our lots up there at Penland. For this fire, you know, to protect our, our area. We got into this Firewise two years ago, last year. And we joined with the State Oregon Forestry of this Firewise community. We've had several meetings over the couple of years. Now we are on an agenda plan. We've met with the Forest Service a couple of times. And the Ellis Project has come up over the last year. And what the Forest Service would like us to do is, they'd like a letter of recommendation to, you know, enforce the Ellis Project. From our Firewise community and from the Penland Lake Corporation. Visiting with the Forest Service, Doug McKay and a few of his other people. And they, they, so we've generated a letter. We sent it to them, and then we got word that, you know, the closed date for the Ellis Project comment session was 22?
Twenty-two, 2022.
So we were behind on the comment section to, so they thought if we have joined our letter with somebody that had commented on it prior to 22, such as the Board of Commissioners. You commented on January 9th, 2019. You wrote a letter to the Forest Service. So I guess is what we're kind of wanting is we want to add our letter to your letter. In, in order to get it, so I guess maybe it backdates to then, so it can be a comment under the pre-22 closed date.
Okay. That letter, do we have that letter in our packet?
Yeah, we do. This one here.
Yeah, that's the letter.
But from 2019, no, it wasn't.
The comments from the Board of Commissioners.
Sandra, I think you sent it to?
I have.
Or did you?
Our letter that we sent.
I have your letter.
Okay.
I don't have the letter from the Board of Commissioners in 2000.
Okay, yeah.
So I'd be curious to see that.
That wasn't, okay. Oh, I see. Okay, so this is.
What was the date? Sorry, on?
It was, well, this, here, I'll just hand it down. Basically, in our letter, what we're asking for is, you know, they got some recommendations of the, the, if you're not familiar with the Ellis Project, which we weren't, so, you know, everybody's heard of it. But the details are, are, you know, you, you gotta dig into them. So they have alternate five levels of thinning, cutting, cutting fire breaks. The, and I think they start one, go to five. And the five is, you know, the upper level is the one that does the most thinning, takes out the bigger trees. That in level five, alternate five, you can take out a tree over 21 inches. But I'm pretty sure they'll be strict on which ones they can take out. You know, they've got a lot of environmentalists that deal with this stuff and hunting groups. And, and all their comment sections, you know, they wanted level five for across the board. Or alternate five, I should say. And we read through it, and alternate five is shuts down like 30-some percent, 32%?
So it, it says 71% of open road network is retained, so they're going to shut down.
Thirty-two percent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Potentially. And some of this shutdown is seasonal, which means they're going to start September 1st through December 1st during hunting season.
During hunting season.
Yeah.
And we're, we're in agreement with the thinning of the alternate five, because we think it'll do the best job. But we're not in agreement with the road closures. We're, the level alternate three has the least amount of road closures, but it doesn't allow as much logging. So we're kind of looking at wanting alternate three joined with alternate five.
Take the road aspect of alternate three with the thinning aspect.
Yeah.
Well, what we're, what we're really requesting is, requesting is no more road closures. Leave the roads the way they are.
Yeah.
And no seasonal closures. But he, after speaking with Doug McKay, the Ranger, he's got a lot of pressure and a lot of letters that have already been posted supporting alternative five across the board with the road closures, the elk security area and the thinning. And so our chances of getting no closures are going to be pretty slim with the pressure that he's facing. He's, you know, there's going to be litigation most likely if that's what he chooses.
Yeah.
So we're kind of.
So when was the last time we had a public comment on road closures? We had a public, then we had a public.
Oh, public com, well, see, that closed back in 22.
Right.
The public comment on the Ellis Project.
And if you go back and look at that, it was the high majority of the people in the county that requested.
Well, there wasn't, there wasn't that many local people that commented. There's, you, the Board of Commissioners commented. I think there's a couple other individuals that commented. But mostly, it was hunt clubs, logging corporations.
Mills.
There was only like 30, what, comments?
Yeah, there is, there's not a lot, but almost half of them are level five cross support. You know, Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation and logging groups and, and mills in the area. So they really want the roads closed or don't care. But they are supporting level five, which we are too. We want level five as far as vegetation goes. But there are roads that we use, you know, all, all year long up there that we'd like to keep open.
And I've seen some of those road closures, and some of them are going to be very detrimental.
Yeah. And, you know, our, our main concern with the, if they close that many roads is the, you know, this, this plan was developed years in the past. And in fact, it was probably developed before they even built a UTV. And everybody knows how many UTVs are in the mountains now. And if you take out 30% of the roads, that just ingests all the traffic on the other roads. And, you know, I, I understand hunting and the elk, you know, protected area. But there's, there's other things in the big picture. That, you know, like Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation doesn't look at, they don't care about UTVs. They just care about the elk habitat. Oregon Hunt care about the elk habitat. They're not, they're not looking at what the county, you know, may interpretate as better for the county.
The other thing that we're concerned about, especially in our Firewise letter, is escape routes in case of wildfire. And with closed roads, that makes it difficult to get out if you've got a catastrophic situation, kind of like we've got right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got big fires going now that might be an all-mute point in another week, who knows? But we've got to move ahead.
It's hard vegetation, but road closure. Right now, all the roads aren't, there's all the forests.
Yeah.
Yeah. Having Ranger District are closed as of right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have several people up at Penland cleaning and watering, trying to protect their structures right now.
So unfamiliar with the O6O road, Ocean's Cabin, the Red Barn. Those are all areas that they want to close that I think is just a terrible idea.
Yeah.
I use those every year.
So basically, we'd like to see them cut the right of ways, make, you know, do the thinning and, and the logging. But we don't, we're not in support of the road closures. And that's why we'd like to attach our letter to yours. If you'll let us, or I, I don't even know how that works.
And I would like to read the letter, just so I'm unfamiliar before we do that. I don't know if I will do that right now, but I guess I can.
There's actually two of them. Both of them are the Penland Lake and then Penland Lake Firewise Community. They're both, you know, adopt the same letter.
Same letter, just different introduction.
Yeah.
So just for the Board's consideration, I just looked up this letter that was set up. It was approved on January 9th to 2019 as, as a motion before the Board. Just the minutes denote that Carla McLean said the letter was drafted based on earlier discussions with the Board. She said she reviewed documents at the Forest Service website. Federal Register noticed the project proposal and the Forest Service letter soliciting comment. However, there is so little information available as to what the Forest Service is doing, that there is no way to make effective comments, she said. Ms. McLean reviewed the contents of the letter. Just in a quick review, it's like saying, we're in support of working with this, and we want to be a consulting agency on, on this. Which I, I would have to see if there is, do a little research to see if there is any response on that. And, you know, if, if there is a venue for us to more or less attach a, a follow-up to that, to that comment.
Well, yeah, this is interesting. This is what I wanted to see, you know, starting that letter. But it's not, it's not germane to, I mean, it doesn't make any difference on what the.
Yeah, this one didn't address any of the alternates compared to what the.
It's just, it's just a way to get your testimony in.
Yes.
Under the deadline.
Very generic letter there.
Yeah.
Yep. And I'm okay with that after reading the letter, having yours attached to that.
Maintain a motion then to approve the letter?
You making that much?
Did you change that to level three from two?
I haven't, but.
We want to change, help them change that before they want to approve it?
Well, so the question is, do we want to change our, our letters are even sent to Forest Service? Do we want to change it in our letter after we stated we don't want any more new roads closed? We could support alternative two road closures if these roads were open. So you can see on the letter that we made a list of roads that we would prefer to have open and others closed. And that's to get to the, in alternative two, 72% of the open road network is retained. So they are closing some roads. But in our letter, we're asking that these roads be left open. And if you have to get to a certain percentage, there's some over here that you can go ahead and close. And the purpose of that is mainly to retain elk security. They want to close those areas to keep the elk in the forest.
I guess I have a, like a technical question is, are, we're not really approving your letter. We're just approving attaching it to ours. Is that correct? I mean, so our motion, is it going to be to approve this specific letter or, you say you've already sent one?
We've sent, we've sent to, well, so we've sent it to the Forest Service. There's an issue in the fact that we're behind the deadline. And so to have any bite, it was suggested that we attach it to somebody who had submitted a letter under the.
Yeah, under, yeah, and that's why we're here. I was just wondering, are you going to resend the letter? Because you were talking about you, you wanted to maybe change the specifics of the letter.
Just the only thing we changed is from alternate, alternative two to alternative three.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's less road closures than alternative three.
My question, I guess, to the staff and everybody is, are we approving this, is this letter going to be marked like, you know, letter A, this, this exact letter? Or are we approving attaching a letter from the Penland Corporation, and then they can make their changes? Because you're going to have to change the letter you've already sent anyway. I mean, that's off the table, right? Or you want it to be, because it's, it, it's past, it isn't, it isn't, it's past the deadline. But the one now will be attached to this, so it's actually a new letter.
We just sent it to the Forest Service last week.
Right, but that's.
So my interpretation, Dave, is is that they aren't going to accept that letter.
Right.
As far as any consideration of anything that they do.
So it's off.
And if it comes in underneath us, then they will look at it as consideration to look at.
Right.
Otherwise, if it just comes from them, they're going to circular file it.
No, and, and I, I get that. I was just saying, they're, they're talking about wanting to change what they've already sent to the Forest Service. And that's not going to be a problem, because actually, that one's off the table.
Yeah.
Not accepted. And this is, so are you going to be changing the letter that you have in front of us now? And do we want to, do we want to actually see the letter that we're going to attach, allow to be attached to ours? Or are we going to just change, and just give them a blanket attachment?
Chair, I can make a suggestion. This would push it out two weeks, but what we could do is.
Well, they want it by the end of July.
Do they? Okay.
No, I mean, I heard what they said. I don't, I don't have any problem with approving a letter that they said, because it's what I agree, we, I think we all agree on that.
Yes.
It's just, I want to make sure that we get it right, you know?
Yeah.
We know what we're doing then. If, if we're, I don't want to attach this letter if they have a better one or a different one that they want. You see what I'm saying?
If you'd like to do a motion to direct staff to work with the US Forest Service to, to submit this as an attachment to our previous letter. Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's, I mean, I think that's, that, that takes care of what I was afraid of. I didn't want to add some motion to attach this specific later.
I would refer that we discuss this in today's meeting, and it was approved by a motion of the, the VOC to allow this to be attached.
Yeah, it's, it's something that'll be signed. I don't know.
Well, we'd authorize the Chair to sign something, and you can work with Matt.
Okay.
So you're on the hook again.
I know. You know how quick you said that?
So I'll make a motion that we direct staff to work with the Penland Lake group and the Forest Service in getting a letter attached to the Board of Commissioners' letter, so they can get it in before the deadline. And we will get back to it at a.
Alter's chair.
Alter's chair to sign and get back to it as, as the conclusion of the discussion. Yeah. Second.
Moving second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Curtis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Taking your time to hear our.
Glad to.
Yes.
Yeah, take care of things.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I think we're all on the same.
Yeah.
Common ground here. We just, you know.
One quick question before you guys take off. You know, I've always thought when they talk about road closures, certainly, are considered people who are elderly, you know? You know, and, and don't necessarily, can't necessarily, you know, get around? Or maybe they're handicapped or something. Does that ever come into consideration? Is, is all the forest, when they close the roads, then they're just open to young people who can hike through? Or older people who are really in good shape, right? I mean, does that ever come up?
I don't know.
You don't know. And I don't want you to say anything. I just wondered. I've always thought about that.
Yeah.
I was curious if it ever.
Would you like me to make the changes on the letter and send it to you?
If you wouldn't.
I'll do that today.
Thank you.
And then we'll just work with you, make sure we, we have it all.
Okay.
So we're all on the same page. Thank you for your time on this.
Thank you for scheduling us on your schedule.
And I, I'd like to thank you personally for rescheduling, because I wasn't available last week.
Yeah. That's not a problem. I just wanted to get it done for our deadline. Okay, if we leave, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're on.
Okay, next up is a frost tree idea for Irigan.
Yes, I can. So in, in your packet, there's a letter from, from the City Manager, Aaron Palmquist of Irigan, about the CRES III areas of influence. It was brought up in a, I can't remember if it was a CRES meeting or a city, county port meeting, where they talked about how Irigan never finalized that paperwork. And so, and they were instructed to get it signed and presented to the, to the county and the port. So this is Irigan's, Irigan's request for area of influence being declared for the Irigan area. They are presenting this to the port as well. The, has the, has the map that was established. And from my understanding, this was, this was done at the same time that the others were, were done. And creates an area of influence that's very similar to the other cities that have theirs already, already taken care of. And so the City of Irigan is asking for approval of, of, of this. And then have it taken to the, the port of moral for, for adoption by them as well.
So I guess my comment is, and I understand that, because the CDA hadn't been transferred, or the property hadn't been transferred to the CDA. So you just noticed that the, what will be the property out of the depot that become under CDA or the port isn't included. But again, then I also noticed, I guess I see that this is going to end just a year, the CRES III, June of 2025. So I guess at that point, nothing's probably going to happen out there before then, so. Just the comment is that when the new CRES gets out, that we include that in the areas, area of influence.
Okay.
And I guess the other comment is, is that since it is going to be ending in 2025, I don't know what the process is in our CRES manager. We'll be needing to look at what it's going to take to establish CRES IV, so that we're ready to go from July 1 of 2025.
And I, well, I don't know what they're going to do with the CRES manager, but I've already started looking into that. Case for some reason is we haven't found it yet. Yeah. And it also depends on what the legislature does.
Well, last time they extended it up to, what, 29 or something? Present.
Oh, they did? Oh, I thought they just did to 28.
I thought we're not.
Oh, okay. So that would give you a chance to go with CRES IV for four more years. Well, that doesn't.
Top of the heart.
That doesn't matter.
Yep.
But, yeah, okay.
So unless there's anything else, I will move for approval of the agreement with the City of Irigan for the area of influence.
All second?
Moving second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next up is our County Weed Management Approach for Manager-related projects. Matt, you're taking that.
Yeah, and I'd ask Cory and whoever else would like to join us on this. One of the things that we're, we talked about is, as we have more and more power projects, wind and solar projects coming online, one of the challenges that our, we, weeds manager, it's a weeds manager, is it weed debatement?
It's now weed control supervisor.
Weed control supervisor. Thank you. We, whenever we meet, we, we always have to at least make two or three comments about the weeds project. And so one of the challenges we have is, as these projects come in and as we're, we're getting larger and larger projects, is about the impact of weeds mitigation for these projects and making sure it's done right. It's taking more and more of Cory's time in coordinating these items. He's had discussions with other counties and with ODO about, you know, what to do. And we're currently in some discussions with some org, organizations right now on SIPs and other agreements on how to, how to take care of this. And so one of the things that was requested was kind of do a workshop, and we're kind of had a work session to discuss this. We rolled it right in here, just in case there is any action that needed to be taken care of. So we wanted to open up a discussion on, on how to approach this. One of the things that, as, as the Chair asked us to consider this, was how do we make sure that this is equitable across projects? Because it could be very challenging to say, how do we, how do we go from here to there? And, and how to, how to make sure it's taken care of? There's two parts of the weeds control issue that we talk about. And the first one is, is the weeds mitigation or management during the construction phase and restoring the soil as it is. And I'd like to just kind of toss it to Cory, just to have, have him explain what happens in there. It's usually during the first three to five years as they, after they do the construction, and they try to restore or control the area, so, so weeds don't come on, so.
I, yeah, I want to do a little preface before he takes it to, to why we're up, why, how we ended up here as a, as Matt said. I did ask for this, and one of the reasons is, is I've talked to Cory several times about this, and he's wrestling with different things. And I think months ago, we asked about, you know, he said he, he was going to, it made more cost for the county. months ago, we asked about, you know, he said he he was gonna uh pay more cost for the county and then uh one of the applicants, you know, for a sun project, solar project was throwing out a figure, talking about a figure, I won't mention names right now or anything, and then I talked to Cory and it it seemed like um we didn't have a standard or we didn't have a cohesive, however you wanna call it, policy or, you know. You know, if we're gonna treat this sun, this solar project, maybe we should have one in place where, okay, it's gonna be the same. So any solar project that so came to Tamra and asked her, you know, or, you know, what, it would be part of her information is, okay, this is what the county's gonna expect for weed mitigation, if you guys wanna do that, yeah. But I just think it would take away uh some of the confusion that seems to be floating around on this and and it's not bad that there's confusion, because we're new to the solar thing, actually, you know, and Cory's wrestling with getting his arms around, you know, what's going on. So that's why I wanted to have this meeting of maybe we could everybody's input on what not only to do with this specific one we're working with now, but also moving on in the future, what's our ideas? Get an idea of what his needs are gonna be as we grow this solar in in Moore County, you know, so.
So I have a question is, if we, so, so I fully understand, if we come up with a plan, right? For us kind of a a weed mitigation plan that's.
With with costs attached.
Costs attached, so what if, so we've heard in the past six months, we've heard several different options for weed mitigation, right? From goats to sheep to completely clearing the the topsoil, so um if we did come up with a plan, would it give us the ability to look at options? Okay, that's, that's.
No, 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 we we like, I mean, I like, you know, the CRES is thinking, thinking outside the box, you know, that's.
I just wanna make sure you don't lose.
No, no, oh, no, no, this is mainly, uh, I guess it's it's actually kind of mitigation of what's happening in the weed department. See, because that's what it's all aimed for, is because of the stress it's putting on the weed department and the changes. But any, any kind of plan somebody comes up with, we're, I, that's the way I want.
Okay, good, I just wanna make sure.
However, yeah, yeah, still open. This this is mainly focused to if he's gonna be, if we're gonna be involved with our weed department, you know, and how, so.
So the comment I wanna make is, I just, you know, hope that those special centers around policy is what I think it is. Because if we get into the weeds, the weeds, figuratively of a project, then I could potentially have a conflict of interest, because certain projects may or may not do business with you. And I wanna make sure that we don't mention any specific project and it's talking about a policy weed mitigation for renewable energy.
Before I turn it over to him on that, I just wanna tell the other part of it and um so we have the weed management, which is during the construction, and then there's the potential for uh for weed spraying and such uh for compliance and that. Um, Sherman County has a, has an, has an agreement with several of the the uh wind projects where they go in and they actually do this, do the annual spraying on that, that's a contracted issue. Uh, that would be where we just hire more sprayers and and applicators for the weed project. But there's a bigger issue that's really more crucial uh to set up for successful spraying and and is what is impacting Cory's time a lot, and that's the weed management during construction and repairing from construction, so. Tell us what goes in on that and uh what what the current setup uh generally is.
Sure, so um the current setup is uh it's it's kind of evolved since Wheat Ridge one or one and two um into where it's just that noxious weed draft plan is not like sufficient enough in many ways to control the plan and to implement it and how it's supposed to be done correctly. And two, just the the, I guess, sheer volume of workload it takes to implement that draft weed plan um is is a lot and a lot more than I think people anticipated. Um just in the last year, ODO, just for here from Moore County, has hired on um uh another uh employee with ASH um as for ODO for compliance and Wally as a Haley and Aldrich Consulting and Bank Ramus. So they've hired three just to kinda keep up and stay on top of this, but a lot of it's coming back to the county. Because we're here, I'm here, um and um I I've been the one that's been catching a lot of this stuff with the untilyness, the uh not following some of the particulars in the draft plan. Um, it's just been snowballing, the problems kind of, and uh we're just trying to all work together and get it right, including the energy companies, and they've been very um cooperative, trying to um get this figured out and get this done right. Um and it it's been working, but not fast enough, and the biggest issue is that first three years, and that's kinda what we talked about in our work session is 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 something set up there for the free, first three years, um because that's when we have all those issues. And if you don't get it right the first three years, it continued, it just, you can't, you can never go back, it, once it's done, it's done, the, it's kinda irreversible damage after that, if you will, and um we have seen some issues with Wheat Ridge one and two that are getting corrected, and it's been a lot of time and effort getting that back in compliance and corrected and um but now moving forward with all these other energy companies, it's kinda it's just kind of uh morphed into like pretty much a full-time job and and um we did get Bank Ramus, who is local on this as part-time, and I'm still part-time essentially, so it is like a full-time position um with the workload now, but there's so much that's not still being covered. And kinda what we're uh we discussed in the work session was like another part-time or or twenty hours at a certain rate, energy companies would attach that to their I believe acreage, like a a matrix of so many dollars per acre to cover a little bit of a help for this for this, yeah, for these projects, especially the first three years, and then it essentially sunset after that three years, it'd just be for three years until we're, we're good to go on the maintenance program, if it's got all the criteria for that noxious weed plan and um things are going as planned. You can have issues.
So during that, during that construction and and rehabilitation of the of the impacted areas, i- it requires uh quite a bit more knowledge and expertise than what our regular weed applicators would be. Um, uh, ODO, Department of Energy uh is the one who tracks it, makes sure that they're in compliance uh from that time, so there's a period where we could say, okay, during this time, until ODO releases you, you, you are on track for this amount. Um, as we talked, and I'm gonna share um share a screen without sharing specia- uh names, um do this and I since I'm signed in on both, it's always interesting if I can share or not. So you're doing, I have a question for Cory. So I know on these, on weed mitigation, we're taking, looking out, you know, end of life is twenty eight, thirty years on a solar plate, right? Now, there's regulations that say at that point, you have to put it back to what it was before you put the solar barm in, correct? Is that correct? It has to be re, it has to be reestablished as what it was before.
Yes, and uh some are different, they're not all the same, but yes.
Or repurposed.
So, but so my concern is, is that, depending on what mitigation you use and how, how much of the of the undergrowth it's taken away, can you get that back to where it can be grown in again? I mean, that's something we need to look forward to, I mean, that, you know, we're obviously not gonna be here in twenty eight years, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't be looking ahead twenty eight years and also including that in policy for the.
I get, to to answer your question, I guess the answer is no on certain applications, especially the ground sterling for X amount of years, twenty years ground sterling, um that uh that would not be returned, you know, forecast to what was originally there and um, yeah, it's no, I guess your answer would be no.
I haven't looked at the specific language on decommissioning and how it handles the soil. Generally, the decommissioning language is taking down structures and doing that, but I'm not sure about restoration of soil, especially if you have a bare ground uh kind of mitigation plant, so.
Well, that was what's my, so that was my concern is, I don't wanna see us getting ourselves in trouble way, thirty years down the road, so. Well, if we'd have known that at the beginning, we'd have done it differently, so. That's uh, that's something to look into.
Yeah, that's part of the court, part of the coordination that needs to happen with these future projects that are considering large acreage.
Right, and that's, you know. I assume that, you know, the smaller the acreage, the less influence, but the large, some of these are huge. Yeah, areas that, I don't wanna come back in thirty years, not that I'll be here, but come back in thirty years and just see a big ball spot in the middle of a agricultural area.
Yeah, so, and so as we look at it, I mean, that that first three, three to five years where we can look at it, we need someone who can manage it, has a certain level of expertise uh uh Bing, who does it right now, he's uh got a couple of sign, science, hard science degrees and everything to take care of, make sure things take care. So as we look at it, one of the, one of the easiest ways I thought was, well, just put it to the, to their, to their generator capacity. You know, that that's really easy, we know exactly what that is, and that's done. However, when you're dealing with weeds, it doesn't matter how much power you're generating, it's actually the ground that's being impacted. And that actually varies on the project. Some projects are denser and generate more megawatts uh per acre than others, and we kinda pulled off some of the existing ones without going into the specifics, and you see, you know, uh thirty one acres for a megawatt on this project, uh some others, smaller ones are uh, you know, very small on how many acres per megawatt it's generated. So you'd have a, you'd have a wide range, especially when you come to, to, these are wind projects here. Um, down below, I have um I have solar projects, and of course, it's got a little bit better uh return for megawatts on on that. So at first, we uh we're thinking, you know, a a flat rate of per megawatt, but then we switched over to kind of a uh a permit fee per acre that would be paid until uh annually until the ODO uh releases them from that, and so we know that they're paying to cover the costs of of our weed management or mitigation kind of activities on behalf of the county. Uh, and set that up, uh whether it's through a SIP agreement or possibly even better through a permit process, uh where was they, they pay an annual fee until they show that they're released from ODO and can be taken, taken out of that consideration. And so that rate that we feel is is flexible and yet uh can be equitably charged would be, uh, we were, we were considering about five dollars and fifty cents per acre uh on an annual basis while they're under those ODO uh re- uh uh requirements.
Now, if you have a permit, is it a permit system?
Yes, and that's where Cameron kinda talked about that, so we should address that a little bit.
I'm interested on that to say, we, when would that be injected into the process? Who would handle it and how would it be enforced, I guess is what I need to know.
Um, Tamara, do you have any?
So, without mentioning any specific projects, very good point. It is, but.
We go move into the future.
So, there's.
There is ongoing right now, so you need to settle, okay?
So if it's a local permit, that's the green, a local project, we can build in a condition of approval for our local permit, and we have standards that would justify something like that. If it's a state permit, it's trickier, and I just wanna, you know, memorialize the fact that in the past year or so, comments that the county has submitted to FSEC directly address this, and we worked really closely with Cory and they said, could you just add a condition to your state permit to fund an FTE, cuz it's that big, and they said no. Um, they're nice to work with, but they didn't give us what we asked for completely. We actually have a meeting with them on August nineteenth and twentieth to go over a whole bunch of compliance issues. Um, we're all getting smarter about it, so permits that the, the applications that the state is still working on, um rather than funding an FTE, I think we could, you know, if the county, as a matter of policy, was adopting a fee to charge per acreage, um I think we could ask for that rather than FTE. And they, when the state asks us to list the local applicable criteria, we would include that among the land use and solid waste and all the other things that we add. So we might have a better chance of them requiring it as a permit condition. And for projects that are already built, I'm not exactly sure, it might be a question for Greg Gobel. If the fee is not tied to land use, it's a separate fee. Um, I think you could, and you'd need to probably set up some sort of program to charge a separate fee. Or there's also the negotiations that Matt and others and Chair Sykes might be in about their tax abatement program. So they could be a subset of that, so if you're negotiating with a company to offer tax abatement, part of the negotiation might be you pay this fee. So there's different ways you could structure it. So again, moving forward, if the county adopts this, I think we could convince FSEC, because the the, we have a formula and a policy and a, and a program for projects moving forward.
So that's my question, so regardless of which way we go, you're either gonna have to go through FSEC or Biz Oregon or somebody for tax abatement or through permitting, still gonna have to be approved by a state entity, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're more likely to approve it at our level than at their level.
When they approve a SIP, they're not looking with something like that.
The SIP is always, uh, uh, there's the three tiers of a SIP agreement, and that third tier is sort of the, whatever y'all negotiate, what the local priorities are.
So that wouldn't have to go through a state agency.
That's, that's, well, the Biz Oregon has to approve it.
Yeah, they have to approve it, but I don't think they're looking, well, yeah, as a, as a example I could bring up, and I brought this up before, is the intermittent lighting on the on the last uh wind uh project.
And that condition was tied to to the SIP agreement, it wasn't tied to, although we can bring that up as an enforcement matter.
You know, and it's been, it's been not, they haven't complied for various reasons, whatever. But I think it's a good example of what happens if for one reason or another, even if it is in the SIP, or if you go with a permit process. What happens if they, they aren't complying, so I think you, you think you have there.
Yeah.
The, with the, with the light thing, and ultimately, I think they're, I don't know if they're in front of this group, said they were considering writing the letter saying that they were going to not give the tax abatement. If they didn't comply with the SIP agreement, we stated directly in there, what are the uh the motion lighting system, well, I've added in, it's gonna work.
That's what I was gonna say, technically, they probably complied because they installed the system. And that's part of what it says, is that you will install this system. And if they install the system and it doesn't work, they have complied.
But if you're gonna be, and continue to operate Moore County, you know, which they are, you don't wanna be going that route, right? You know, I guess there's some that would say, yeah, it's installed, too bad, lights are on all the time, and the system's installed. I don't know, anyway, that's kinda what I like, and then also the ones that are permitted, um there, but uh they would, there wouldn't be an opportunity to include that, run that through FSEC, so you're gonna have to deal with those separately, yeah.
Yeah, those were, that's why I sort of said there's to be, and then looking back.
Get on that, but I don't think it's a problem, like I said, we're talking.
Well, I accept permitted projects. Who does have the responsibility to make sure that their own weed mitigation plan is it, although?
So, it ultimately, it is ODO, ODO checks in with um with myself, and um they ask how things are going, they ask like what they see. They get a report um from uh Tetra Tech and, or in most cases Tetra Tech, and uh off that report, um they gauge and then Seems to double check that. So, now it's coming before me where I um. Like I sign off on all the applications before they're made on these, uh, you know, um. Any work that's done on these energy um corporations, there are facilities, and. Um, in contact with them, seeing how things are going and what the timeliness is and what the issues are and um. It's kind of falling back on the county.
Can I just add, um, um, Cory's exact, I use the analogy, FSEC's in first position and we're in second position. So there's nothing about an FSEC condition that precludes the county from enforcing other laws and codes and regulations that we have on the book. It's very clear about land use, we don't get to add or delete.
Wait a minute, oh, I thought you said the Supreme Court ruling on this.
Yeah, we just, it's, it's, well, there is that, yeah, there is that, yeah. Um, but, but um if, if Cory wanted to pursue our enforcement process. To say, you've got weeds out there and I'm gonna issue a fine, or I'm gonna collect what it costs us to reimburse. He can do that, it's just this, the scale of these projects are so giant. And that doesn't work with lightning speed, and our office has worked with Cory in the past and worked through the code enforcement, code abatement process. So, and also interesting, I just went back when we were talking yesterday. And some of those conditions written by FSEC require a weed mitigation plan and to implement it. And Cory spent a lot of hours reviewing recent weed mitigation plans, what does that mean to implement it? And, and also I think the state does a good job about saying have your contractors and your subcontractors go out there and evaluate. But there's still nobody out there with a backpack or a side-by-side spraying weeds. And that's really the shortcoming, why I think Cory is looking for extra money to, we need boots on the ground, not just people who are pushing papers.
So, if we find that they're not in compliance, why don't we just find the landlord and tell him that they're out of compliance, and then they. Get on the developer's ass and tell him to make it happen, because, you know, on the other aspect of it is. If we are out there as the county spraying the weeds, we're competing with private enterprise, and I don't wanna be competing with private enterprise. Because we will be then having, there's are many applicators in the area, I mean, Simplot, like. Lober Ellis, and you know. Cleaver's Company does it, and all kinds of growers, I mean, there's a plethora of sprayers around. And I don't want us to be competing with them, so, and I guess I will go back to kind of an analogy. That, you know, there's other land, large land masses out there that call it CRP. That has to have a weed mitigation plan, the county never required it, the, I'm gonna pick on my friend Chris Brown. Cause his family's farm was in CRP for twenty plus years that I know of, and just in the last couple of years, they took it out of CRP. County never got any money from the Brown family for weed mitigation out there. It was on him, and if there's something going on out there, he had the responsibility to do it. So I don't, logically, I don't see the difference between, I mean, a weed is a weed, ground's ground. So.
Ownership is ownership.
There again, I'd like to add something, and when I was talking to Cory, and the impression I had, one of the reasons I wanted this, it's not mitigation. It's uh. Inspection and, you know, it's, it's going on inspecting the property, right? I mean, that's where you're, that's where your budgetary or manfall, manpower shortage is. We're not talking about wanting the county to get out there and spray weeds, you're talking about people who. I don't know what you do on CRP, I mean, nobody probably looks at that, but anyway, let's just talk about it.
Sure.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what our discussion was about, right?
Yeah, yeah, so the only time the county would go out there um at all would be if they weren't in compliance, they didn't do it. They weren't getting it done. They would spray what needs to be sprayed, if they were out of compliance, but they listed weeds, and then they would get a bill for it. Um, tha- that's the only time, and I am on, completely on board about not taking a private um entity's job, you know, and. We'll, we'll just have to see where that goes, but I, I, I agree with you, uh commissioner, so. Uh, but there has been issues with, when Bing came on board, that. Uh, a bad spray app, or I shouldn't say bad application, but an application was going out where it was going to avoid a CRP contract. Because of the nesting and of the certain time, and that was caught um by us and corrected, and um. There's, there's just a lot of groundwork to be done out there with the, with the coordination with the landowners and the restricted use. What they're trying to use and.
One thing, we might, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but one thing we might think about too, as you're talking about CRP is. CRP's been in the county for how many years now, twenty, thirty years now? See, so it's built into our system as far as if you're doing any. Not many, uh, compliance inspection, whereas these new projects are coming in on top of you. You know, and if you just don't have the manpower to do it, I mean, what do you do? Do, you know, the other option is just have the county absorb that cost, you know, I mean, that is an option. But the CRP is already there, and, and your, your staff and everything is already doing, this is new. It's putting stress under your sta- under your department for compliance inspection, that's what we're talking.
Yeah, the, the can, the inspection part, um. I'll be honest with you, is not really taking place there, because the workload is even bigger than that, like. So busy with this that not even having the time to go out and inspect or see what's. That they have been doing, what they've been saying to do, and they have, it's only when the issues come up with the landowners and other people and the drama. Going to the top that like, we, we deal with that, but as far as, there, there really hasn't been any.
When you say landowners, usually adjacent landowners who are.
Landowners uh that have the projects on their. On, on their property that maybe they feel aren't the, the. The entity did not follow the noxious weed draft plan and didn't do what they say they did. Um, some neighbors with concerns, but nothing. Like they went to litigation, nothing, they just took care of it, sprayed it, and it is what it is because they own property too, and they understand that, kinda. Yeah, so, um, but. The, the, the biggest issue is uh. Is just. Not being able to focus on uh what's needed to get the job done right, cuz the jobs have not been getting done. Right, and it's been creating issues.
Don't get me wrong, I don't want spread noxious weeds, but what, a lot of what I'm hearing here is that maybe we need to be holding Odo's feet to the fire. If they're responsible for making sure that the noxious weed plan is being followed, maybe we need to be getting. On them and saying, you know what, you want this, you're permitting this. You need to be doing what you are tasked to do.
As part of that task, having an inspector come out and look at the property on a regular basis, what you're doing.
What, what I'm.
Isn't that what you're doing? Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if, what's going on now, if, if it's a responsibility. And Cory has, in its compliance role, have you been doing, taking over their responsibility? And should, do they have somebody like you that goes out if it's their responsibility and looks for compliance?
So, they do, that was kind of the position for Bing and kind of what Bing's um. Job description was into to help with that and to help the county and to take ownership on Odo's part, and Odo hired. Or excuse me, Haley and Aldrich hired him cuz they're the consulting firm, so as a consultant, but. He's, he's doing much more than, than that also, so it's, it. It was, in my, in my vision, it was kinda going one way, but then it kinda turned around um. Uh, another direction which uh Odo and Haley and Aldrich need on their side, which is um reporting and. And um other um duties that they have Bing now on, because, because there's, yeah.
Jeff made a good point, you know, I mean. You, you know, if it's Odo, and their responsibility for compliance inspection. And they were doing it, we shouldn't even be sitting here, and you would have stress under your department because you wouldn't have been having to do it.
Cuz it seems like we're going down the same route that we always complain about, is that we're getting over and doing things that the state should be doing. And we're taking it on at the local level and absorbing that possible, and it's really the states.
What do you think of that, Cory, are we?
Uh, a little bit, I mean, they are, yeah, a little bit, they are in Salem, they did just hire Wally, who will be out here. Um, to help with this and, but um. My, my problem is, even if they do, if Odo does get somebody hired on for that, it's still, um, they're still looking. For me to go to those meetings to um, to have input, to. Let them know what I've seen, what I've heard, what, um, and um actually um recommendations on how to correct. Some of the mess and how to fix some of the mess and how to, like, how do we get out of this, and that's where I come in, and. On one aspect of it, but it's just a lot. For me and my department, and nothing is getting done for the weed district, the roads, the other contracts, it's taking a lot. And so that's kinda where I'm trying to get help at, is, is to take this off my plate so I can concentrate more on the weed district aspect of it.
Could, could this, uh, could this amount that we've seen is you cover your time for the, for the county's. Uh, requirement on that and to, you know, and then we hire an additional sprayer to do the regular stuff that you're missing out on as you. Work on this compliance?
Uh, yes, that is one aspect that could. That, that could work, yes, but it'd have to be. Yes, I mean, I think so, but it, it, I'm still involved with the rest of the five contracts, and we are working out. A solution for the road department spraying, so it'd be a, like a contract sprayer. And then a roadside sprayer, like that would be the help that would be needed, full-time, basically full-time sprayer. But uh. I, yeah, it's just, yeah.
They're, they're, I mean. It's interesting, landowners that are leasing the properties to some of these uh projects are some of the ones who are complaining the loudest when weeds get out of control. And yet our, our, our regulatory, as far as that, would be to give notice to the property owners that they have weeds on their property. And so it kinda becomes an interesting circle that comes around uh for them to hold compliance on their. On their, the leasing of, of their, their land. Yeah, that's where I guess I would fall, is that if it's. The developer is having a weak problem on your own ground, you need to go talk to the developer. Again, I'll use my friend Chris Brown as an example, he's leasing out the family farm down, somebody else is farming it. If that farmer isn't doing what Chris wants, and he needs to go talk to the person he's leasing it to. You know, and for the landowners that have the renewable energy projects on. My opinion is they should go talk to the developer, cuz, you know, they are the underlying. But they are also receiving income from that, you know, so. E- either make the developer do it or do it yourself, I don't know how this becomes the county's. Every other citizen, the county is responsible.
I think it goes back to. Compliance inspection.
And that's the state's responsibility.
Making him do it, I mean, we're not really talking about the county doing anything, it's, it's tracking down. Okay, see, is it complaint-driven now where a landlord comes to you and says, is that, it's like regular compliance?
It started.
It's almost all complaint-driven, right?
Yeah, it, it did start out that way, yes, and then once we kinda figured out how we got there. Another aspect of it has been. Just not, not timely applications, not um. Not um done according to what the noxious tree weed draft plan kinda. Recommends or wants, and that, that goes back to applications with spray, with timing, with, i- i- it's more catching it before it happens now. Corrective, corrective behaviors before it gets bad, and, and even during the process, changing up, completely changing up. Um, work orders to like, no, this is not gonna work, we're gonna have to go this way, we're gonna have.
Tell me the process, okay, say you're a landlord, or a adjacent landlord, you have a complaint. Compliance complaint about weeds, they call you. Okay, and you're, and you're saying that maybe they should be calling the state. To come and check on the compliance, notify the property or whatever the process is. And maybe we have gotten into this and set precedent. And I mean, if that's the way we're going, cuz a lot of that precedent's pretty powerful, the more you do of it, the more sun, uh, solar projects we get. The more precedent takes over, you know, or is it time to, like, is to nip it in the bud and go, somebody calls you and says, okay. I want you to check on this compliance, well, here's the phone number of the state who actually is supposed to be doing that, call them. I don't know, I'm just looking at every option here.
Yeah, so, that, a lot of it now is too, is they see what's going on, and um they. Come to me and say, why is this bit, why are they doing this? Landowners, yeah, landowners, uh, why are they doing this, this is a concern, you know, why are.
Why are the adjacent landowners doing it?
Why are the contractors for the?
The contract, on their own property.
On, 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 yeah, spraying for the, yeah, spraying for the.
And they come to you.
So when they come to get a permit, let's just say, let's just say I'm a weed farmer, and I've got some. Middle ground that isn't doing well, and I wanna put in a solar farm, so I contact the solar farm, and they talk. And then they come to the county for a permit, is that correct? I just wanna understand how I'm not in planning, or, or that, so. Um, so they come to the county and ask for a permit, and then you go through the permit and then that's sent to FSEC? Or does it go to FSEC before it comes to the county?
The smaller ones come to us, the larger ones go directly to FSEC.
So is there a process there where the landlord could be held responsible in that permitting process that you are responsible for the weed mitigation?
Typically, I, I have never seen, I, I think one time I've seen a lease agreement. Because they're confidential between the landlord and the company, they sign away a lot of stuff in that lease agreement. And I think that's why they call Cory, cuz they feel helpless that they can't do much about that.
So that's what my question is, is during the permit process, can, can the information be given to the landlord that says you are ultimately responsible? For weed mitigation, and that takes us off of it and puts it back on the landlord who is being paid. By this company to put the solar farm on their property, right, they're making the benefit out of it, the county gives benefit too, I understand that. Um, but ultimately, the landlord is the one who's giving up his land. For money, so ultimately, I believe it should be the landlord's responsibility to do the weed mitigation, and. If they have to go back to the state, which I'm assuming they would have to go back to the state to go after the, the company. Because there's no way a landlord is gonna be able to go after a company and win that, right? You know, you know, so. I'm just curious if there's a, if there's a process going forward where you could get that out of the county's office and put it in the landlord's office.
So, for one, uh, the landowners are doing that, they're put, they're, they are taking care of. In my opinion, all the weeds that escaped, they're putting out the effort, they're doing it, they're controlling, like, the weeds on their property. I, I believe that for sure, I have seen that, I've witnessed it. The, the trouble, the, honestly, the trouble is, these. These projects are so big. That there, there does have to be someone in the beginning to say, this is what you need to do, this is how you need to do it, this is when you need to spray. This is why you can't use this application, it's against the law, you have broken the law by doing this, stuff that we, you know. That's what we're like, and, and there's money there for that, and we're just asking for three years, just for three years for this, to get that position in place. To cut out all the drama, to not make more like rules and regulations, just to work with people, the coordination. Yeah, and, and that's what's, that's what's taken a lot of my time, a- and, and that's what's needed, that first three years, so. And, and that's what's needed, that first three years, so um.
And I, I, I would just echo that a little bit, uh, while you could say, what, what's the county's role in this? Uh, well, part of that is. We, we gave a stamp of approval to especially some of these larger projects that have. Apparently detrimental impact. And so if we were to uh, incorporate it into a SIP or into a permit saying, this is just part of our process, you come in here. We want to make sure you're in compliance, here's what it's gonna cost to do that. As, as, as we're here to assist you, make sure the headland, landowners are taken care of. And we're here to make sure, because there is. There's gaps in state enforcement, right now. And that impacts our, our county.
And I don't want to let them off the hook just because they have gaps.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to take, I don't want to take the onus of the state that's not doing, that's my responsibility.
But we, we are at the point where some of these projects are saying. Okay, we, we understand, we need, we need to help out on this because it's not happening. And there, whether they're paying a contractor or coming to the state, to the county and saying, help us do this. They're actually asking for this and we don't want to do that for free.
Just to add one little. Piece in, that we, we do have an agreement, do you have a separate agreement for reimbursement with Odo or do you fall under?
I fall under yours, yeah.
So we, the, the state has a program set up. Where they reimburse local government for their time working on projects. And um, I, I actually need to catch up with all my hours for the past, I don't know how many months, it's tedious, but we do it. But the, to underscore Cory's point, the volume and scale of projects right now is. And being reimbursed after the fact still doesn't get the, the job done and it would probably not cover. Everything and the big workload is the upfront, those first three years, because once Cory gets them. Under control, then.
Maintenance and we took care of it right, yeah, at the beginning, first time and.
No, you, you said big does. Uh, I'm not talking maintenance, mitigation, I'm talking compliance inspection, he does that too, right?
Uh, sort of, um.
Who, who around here does that, other than you?
Uh, Wally will be the first on the nineteenth.
And we don't know that he is, uh, there's a person named Wally. Uh, who went from Odo to Haley Aldridge, one of the consulting firms, who will monitor compliance, but he's not, Wally isn't the weed expert. So.
I guess what I'm getting around to is, is what if part of the agreement was? That they contract with a, a weed compliance person to inspect. You know, so then it puts it between the private contractor and the landlord or the, the company putting in the solar farm, so it takes you out of it because. But then you still have, okay, who turns in the report, who do they turn the reports in? Does it go straight to the state, you know, but still, put it, put them. Put it as a, as a condition of whether it's a permit or, or the uh, SIP agreement or pilot or whatever. You will contract with a uh, compliance uh, person, you know? And will, and have, you know, inspections done X number of times, you know, and then you're out of it. Just, it's just somebody making sure that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you contract with a contractor that does compliance. Then they, they better well do it on, on the terms that are in their contract.
Yeah, and that's. Part of this position or part of this is, is.
One of the one we're talking about. But we're, see, the county's providing that. I'm saying, what about we step completely out of it and have them hire their own? Say Bing did do it, you hire Bing to do, I shouldn't use his name because he doesn't do it, you said.
He, he does it for, yeah, right.
He doesn't do compliance inspection. You talked about somebody, there was another, okay. He does those mitigation. Okay, so you, you. You have somebody that, that they contract with for compliance inspection and it's not the county. County stepped completely out of it, then we don't have to worry about. Any of it, where we should.
Yeah, and, and that would, that would be fine. Uh, I, I just, I believe it does need um, more oversight than just. Checking the work and making sure they're doing or did what they said, it's.
Right, and then.
They, they need clear direction of like.
Expertise.
If, if it wasn't the agreement, you said the energy uh, has, has guidelines about weeds, right?
Yeah, uh huh.
Okay, so who, if you, if they didn't contract, for instance, with an independent. Compliance person, they come around and inspect on a, a certain basis. Who would that person send their reports to? Then, you know, to make sure the compliance. That, yeah. Do the complying, that the compliance officer does what they're supposed to, would they go straight, would they, are they, would they be kind of just sent to the state?
They, they would, um, basically what would happen was next era, who does the monitoring and the. Um, reporting would send it to Odo, Odo would have this. Basically, like fact check their work to make sure it was done.
Okay, so then see, then the county, you're completely out of it and you're going back to what your, your real job is, you know, you're not. It's between, just like Jeff was saying, it's between the property owner or the. The, the operator, whatever you call it, and their independent contractor to take care of their compliance inspection, see.
The, the, there, there is still one aspect of it that's missing though in that scenario and that's, that's at the beginning. Basically, a project manager. Essentially, uh, to. Tell them if they're doing their own job right or not, or by. You know, what they, you know, how it should be done properly.
And they wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to hire a compliance officer to take care of that.
No, it's not. I, I don't think the compliance aspect is a little bit of it, is a part, is a part of it, but really, truly. To make sure the job is done right the first time and that it's done during timing, which you don't have escape. Basically to squash everything afterwards that that compliance officer would be checking.
That's why you were talking about the three year window.
That's why I'm talking about the three year window. That's, that's the big issue there. It is expertise upfront, um.
So who has that expertise?
Corey.
No.
Well, I mean, there's stuff that you don't have in your back pocket as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. Um, no, someone like Bing, someone like a, a seasoned. Uh, agronomist with, with twenty plus years' experience. And, and they're all very highly paid, they're all in a good job that they like, it's gonna be, you know.
Would that be something like OSU Extension would be able to help out with? I think that any Simplot or Uber or else or any applicant or any way. They have those agronomists and they have those fieldmen on staff that can do that.
And, and that would be, because this is not regular and we might not see it sustained, we'd be looking at, i- if we were bringing in those managers, doing it on a contract basis rather than hiring an employee to do it.
You know, again. You could use that five point five dollars per.
That, that would be the thing for that, yes.
And, don't get me wrong, not against, you know, keeping the weeds down, but it just keeps feeling like we're letting the state off the hook. Of not doing the job that they are responsible for doing. If they are responsible for the, the innovation plan and the whole permitting of these FSEC projects. Then they need to be doing their job. Then FSEC gets their permit fees and it's very expensive to go through there. And I would assume part of that is for the follow-up and making sure that there's permit compliance. And FSEC isn't making sure that the permits are being complied with. And, you know, if it was a locally permitted project, then yes. Cory is our guy that needs to be doing it because we permitted it and we're getting that. But if it's an FSEC permitted project and they are responsible for compliance, then.
We need to hold them to that.
And, you know, may, maybe it is that we hire somebody that does it, well then that's Bill Odo. Because you aren't hiring the people to do it, we are doing it, now you need to reimburse us.
You're saying the reimbursement is tedious and late coming and it'd be better if it was up, money upfront?
It's, that's exactly right. It's after the fact for sure.
Yeah, so.
And then how do you capture all of it is pretty tricky.
And I, I do know a little bit of Odo's aspect from it and they're like, we, we shouldn't be. Telling them what to do, we shouldn't be the ones figuring their stuff out for them, we're supposed to just be, so it, it, it is a circle. We gotta get.
Right, and I, that's what I see. Everybody's running around chasing their tail, pointing at the guy in front of them and nobody's really doing their. Well, it comes to you and then you're overwhelmed and.
Yeah.
Right. So the state responsibility is falling down to the local level.
Well, yeah.
So, Chair, if I may, I, I think that there's a significant policy issue to raise at the state level. And maybe that's something you want to ask Matt and I and Cory to work on, um, not unique tomorrow county, I'm sure.
Sherman County is hiring four people to do it, then.
But, but they.
Failing them too.
That's exactly right, that's, and, and your Korea board, it's a great issue for them to take up as well.
Yeah, the developers on there.
Yeah, I mean, right now, we're having a serious impact on Cory's time and quite frankly, we're understaffed for the size of the county that we have. And so, uh, that's one, one of the reasons why this is.
Road miles?
A thousand, just under a thousand miles of roadways and then there's four other contracts that are. Consuming, but.
And then you have how many acres of?
Well, and then I'm not doing anything else that the other weed coordinators all around me are doing and that's taken care of. Like the landowners and their issues with weeds and inspecting and, and coming up with programs, it's just that the taxpayers are really dense. In my opinion, suffering from this.
I think there's one other thing to put in there as a time element now because, you know, we have one large project. It's waiting in the wings and already talking about this, so. If we're talking about going and trying to straighten something out with the state, there may or may not be an impact. In the meantime. The clock is running.
It'd be nice to get ahead of it.
I was hoping to establish some kind of policy for this current one and anything moving forward. But I don't know, maybe you have to, I don't know, I hate to take the one current. Project and, and have a one out. And then have it, you know, but there again, we don't want to spend money that we don't have to either, so. How long would you be able to get an answer for, before you get an answer from the state?
It took a long process just to get Bing, but.
Well, I just, like I said, if, the, the, the timeline driving it is.
We understand, we understand your situation, we are, we're not trying to skirt around it, we're just trying to not get ourselves in. Into litigation or in over our head or. We want to get it done right, but get ahead of it.
And, and lay out the rules for, for moving forward. Because that way we're not just going on precedent without, and everybody knows, you know? And just like Matt was talking about, you know, come down to acreage, which is makes sense because that's how the weeds are grown, they aren't grown. By the amount of kilo, megawatts, you know, so whatever it is, whatever we decide, make it so it. The next project and the next project and Cameron can tell them and, you know, everybody and, you know, you do a SIP agreement and, you know, whatever you, you know, whatever.
So one thing is all we were talking about, um, of course, wind and solar generating areas. Um, you know, a certain rate per acre could also be used for transmission lines as they come in, disrupt as we got some. Projects coming in, if, if we were to look at kind of things like that.
Sure, and I mean, once he touches the numbers. On what he has to do, not to me, I want to say it's easy, but it should be able to. Just set, you know, set those things up so you can tell somebody.
I guess that's one of the.
Or get it in written policy, if you're gonna put in this, then it's gonna cost you this for weed, weeds and everybody knows.
Yeah. The trouble is this uh, this position uh, like, needs to be in place like. Like right now, right? Like right now and then the next one coming on, um, it's gonna be very soon and.
Well, see, that's, that's, that's what we got, we got. We got more than one right now, so we got your right nows, we got a SIP right now, I mean, this is, we're, we're looking down. Uh, like I said, the clock's running all over the place.
Yes, yeah.
So. So this was a discussion on, on how to do this. I mean, we do have some agreements on it. I think it is something we need to look into. Uh, if, if you'd like to have staff uh, kind of push with Odo and just see, you know, I mean, unfortunately. Um, about six months ago, when we had that meeting with Sherman and Odo was involved, they were like, wow, this sounds good that you guys are doing it and. Raw, raw team, of course.
They're getting let off the hook.
And uh, at the same time for uh, for these rather significant projects that are gonna be impacting. Uh, the environment in our county, I don't know if we'll be able to wait for Odo.
Show that chart up there, but the pen is.
Yeah, yeah.
And I've always heard, I've always heard estimates that there's more making noises out there, you know? I don't know if that's true, but yes, you're just, that way we'd be ready if there were, whether they are or not.
Well, I guess that's part of being an innovator. Right? I mean, Sherman County is ahead of us, obviously, so, I mean, I'm sure we talked to Sherman County and found out their headaches and maybe we can get ahead of some of them.
And interesting, their total, their total area is gonna be dwarfed with these.
No, I get that, we, what we're doing, yeah, but they've been in it longer than we have, so.
Yeah, they're on the maintenance side of it, so they, they did get things corrected and then, um.
They just.
They did that on their own without state help.
No, uh.
Developers helped.
The developers did it, right?
The developers did it, it went out of compliance, it was a mess and that's when they stepped in, the county stepped in, took care of it, did it the right way and then. Nobody wanted to. Commit to that project, um. Because, yeah, you can keep them real busy and you can keep four guys real busy in the spring, four guys real busy in the fall spraying. But what do you do with them in the winter and the summer when it's above eighty-five? Uh, the private sector could not justify that. And so that's why they had trouble, they can't find anybody, is what they tell me, they can't find anybody to do it.
A little more remote than we are.
Yeah.
So do you guys think you have enough information to instruct staff what today? Where to go on this? I mean, we're not gonna have to sit here and come up with figures or.
No, right.
We gotta tell them which way we want to go, we want to go with SIP, do we want to go with a permit, do we, no.
I think we need to look at all the options.
Want to go just try to get the county to take over and don't forget, we got the clock running on.
So I like the permit idea better because I guess one of the things I would think of on a SIP agreement or any agreement in there. The developer comes in with a number in their mind of how much they're going to spend. How much they are willing to, can spend, whatever you want, whatever you want. And if you start decrementing from that, the benefit to the county diminishes. So, permit, it's an expense.
Expensive, yeah.
Yep.
What do you think of that, Kevin?
We can do it, I need to look at the nexus between our land use standards and weed abatement, there has to be, you know, from being on the planning commission. That still doesn't help us catch up with some projects that are under construction.
Yeah. So moving forward.
Construction, then we've missed it on.
We've missed about anything.
And everything else, any.
That's right, that's right.
That's where we need to get on, Odo's butt. Do your job. You're, you're responsible for it, this is a process of several avenues, I think, that we're gonna have to follow, I mean, obviously, we're gonna have to go to. Wouldn't say, you, you're failing us, you need to step up and you realize that that's not gonna happen tomorrow.
You make that note on an invoice too.
Yeah.
On, on an invoice, you're right, hey, you guys are failing us, you know? Here it is, what you're failing right here, wow.
That's the conversation we have Courtney, with Courtney Crowell. The governor's person that, you know, this is what we're seeing, you know? The government, you know, lay it down to Odo.
So should we have. Discussion for Matt and Tamara and Cory?
I think at this point, I, um. And what I've got here is uh, explore and flush out what the permit process would be, which is gonna be both. Uh, you know, uh, what, what our rules are on the county as well as what the, how that fits in with Odo and FSEC's uh, process. And then the second one is to push on Odo about their compliance. And uh, whether that's pulling in Courtney Crowell or contacting Odo directly saying. We're dying out here, what are you gonna do? And uh, because we got plenty of other things that uh, that Cory needs to be doing and, uh, I mean. He's taking care of these big projects, which is a primary goal for the state of Oregon. And so.
And normalize it, do that and then plug a figure in later. And normalize if you do that and then plug a figure in later after you figured out what, but seeing we're under the gun now and having already people wanna get something going, whether it's a SIP or not. I need that figure soon.
I like that five and five and a half per acre figure. It it fits our needs for contracting and taking care of it. It's just whether the commission is comfortable with us. Doing that, that approach and whether with this one, you build that into the SIP. And then we look at future ones under a permit process. That might be an approach I'd recommend.
And I sit down and talk to them. I gotta know. Not, not, I gotta know this is the county policy and this is what we want. And this is what the commission said they wanted or whatever. We want to do it.
And your five fifty.
And then if they say, no, we we don't, we wanna, we don't think that's right, then negotiate your way, whatever you want to do, but you need a figure soon, you know.
So your five fifty in acre, you feel comfortable defending that and showing that this is where we feel this is what it costs? So they don't say, where did you come up with that?
Come up with that.
Well, I pulled it out of the air.
Well, it's kind of based on some actual costs that we have that that we're projecting with with the current contract and. You know, basing that over over the acres on I've got a couple of projects that are underway right now. That's what I want to hear.
Put it in a spreadsheet and send it to me, okay?
Okay. We can do that.
All right.
Is that okay? Any questions from?
Well, I do our August twentieth meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to sit in on that.
Yeah.
So, okay. We just appreciate the commission chiming in on this. This is a big issue. We realize it. I know the chair was interested in it and I know Corey's very interested in this, so. Thank you for allowing me to sit down this discussion.
Yeah, and I I believe getting ahead of it as soon as possible is gonna save us.
Yeah.
A lot of money in the road.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's.
And I guess you know what to do just of consensus, right?
I believe so.
Our attorneys aren't even.
One of them's online. The other one's nine, nine hours difference, so.
We need a motion, Greg. Okay. Uh, next up, we have, uh, fire updates.
And the resolution.
Oh, the resolution.
Let me just show. Show you on the fire update very quickly, um. And I, um. So this is a picture of the southern, uh, southern portion of our county. As you can see, the, uh, the Lone Rock, I'm gonna use this cursor, it's a little bit quicker. Lone Rock Fire right here is about a hundred and thirty thousand acres burning. Uh, still much of the area in into Wheeler County and and such is currently actively burning. The, uh, the different colors on these, you have red is a tier one, uh, a level, a level three evacuation. Yellow is a level two and le- level one is, uh, just notice that there's issues. And so, uh, the county line goes along the straight line right here and then back up. And so you can see the more or less. The, in almost the entire edge of the south, uh, south county is on fire. Lone Rock, as you can see, the two, uh, parts of it that has burned is back into level two. Uh, most of the fire is out of the county now. Uh, the issue that we have are these fires that I had made mention were caused by embers or lightning strikes from the Lone Rock, uh, fire. And these are currently, uh, burning to the south, but with a change of wind, they could easily go to the north. Uh, just yesterday, we had a report of a fire in the Taylor Creek area, which is up, uh, north of the Pinman Lake area and that. We're very concerned about any fire getting up into that because that area hasn't been logged and it's pretty much chock full and it does have year round residents. If you notice right here, uh, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand acres burned in in Oregon so far this year. Uh, between these fires right here, that's over two hundred and forty thousand of those acres. We we are the epicenter of the the fire, uh, issue this year. Uh, just to let the commission know, uh, I had Chair Sykes sign a delegation of authority. Uh, last week because, uh, several of these areas where the fire for Lone Rock and that are not covered by any of the existing rural fire districts. Uh, fire protection districts that are that they're there. So the county is ultimately responsible. So the state, uh, asked us to sign a delegation of authority to allow them to, uh, to, you know, give the direction on evacuations and. And road closures and other things in this area. The sheriff is, uh, coordinating very closely with them. They're having nine o'clock briefings every morning. And I've asked him for three o'clock, uh, briefings in the afternoon to get me up to speed on the latest. Uh, literally, the Taylor Creek Fire notification came in right at the conclusion of our meeting yesterday. Um, and about a half an acre is all that's burned. I haven't got an update if they were able to get their crews up there and take care of that at this time. That one, like I said, was a worse one. Out in this area, uh, south of the. I can't remember what, wasn't it, uh, the twenty-five.
Western route?
Western route. Uh, there's only a couple seasonal homes in there. They have been evacuated. Once we get north of that line, we start getting into some more, uh, you know, seasonal residences and also year round residences. And so we, uh, we are working on those and trying to make sure that things get taken care of in that way. The level of the fire and everything has has, uh, uh, the sheriff has asked us to, uh, to proceed with the declaration of the state of emergency. We have it set up where, uh. The county can declare their own or they can ask the state to declare it, which allows us to be back underneath theirs. Uh, the approach that the sheriff's asking for today is to, uh, to make a request to the governor to, uh. To declare the state of emergency. That ties in with the state OEM, uh, uh, group and their efforts in that way. This is just above and beyond anything that our local resources could ever deal with and we are, uh, associating some expenses to it. Uh, with taking care of the camp, uh, the the base camps for the firefighters. We have that at the fair currently. Uh, they're operating out of the OHV. Uh, just let you know, the OHV is about right in this, this nice little yellow mark, right, right in this area. And they, we have not had fire hit the OHV yet. Uh, we do have staff there, just they're helping. It it is closed. There are no campers there, but, uh, the fire crews are using that as a base. Uh, my directions to Greg and his staff, uh, which several of them have wildland, uh, fire training. Is if if two oh seven gets threatened, they're supposed to get out of there. If if the fire gets close to that two oh seven, they are to pull out, uh, is the directions. And until then, they're allowed to, uh, support. They're filling up, uh, tankers with water from the well on, uh, on a very regular basis each day as they, uh, assist on that. And so, um, big issue, like I said, we've only had one structure lost in our county. Uh, hearts, hearts go out to the, uh, counties to the south. Some of those are really hitting right into residences and 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 even towns. Uh, in that area. Uh, the roads are closed, but if anyone of the commission, uh, would like to go and take a tour, uh, Sheriff Bowles can, uh, can, uh, create an escort, have you go down? I was thinking about possibly going down on, uh, tomorrow to do that. So if any of you have availability or interest in that, uh, but. All that nice green, uh, uh, green moisture we got earlier this year is unfortunately paying us back in this heat and the fire. Any questions from the commission on this?
It's like the smoke has gotten better at the OHV. It was, you couldn't see this hillside earlier.
Yeah, looking at the live cam?
Yeah, that was at nine thirty and it was, you couldn't see the hill sides.
Yeah. He he says it comes and goes. He says, actually, they've they've had pretty clear weather up there in OHV, but occasionally when the the wind kicks up the right way, they've got a lot of, a lot of it. He isn't, uh, Greg and talking with him, he isn't, he isn't worried too much about the Lone Rock Fire threatening the OHV right now. It seems to be contained on the west side. He's more worried about the Boneyard Fire, uh, extending. Now winds are coming out of the northwest, so we've got the winds on our side on that. Um, thank goodness, our our county's viewpoint, uh, but we do have, uh, thunderstorms coming through, uh, you know, starting tomorrow. And that could change the winds and play havoc and create more lightning strikes. Unfortunately, with any, with no anticipated moisture. And with that, we would ask the commission to can, uh, to, uh, make a resolution. I don't have the resolution number on that.
Oh, two twenty-four.
So I'll just hand that if someone would like to make a resolution in this regard, uh, this would allow us to tap into. The state and federal funds as necessary.
Okay. Make a motion to accept resolution number R dash two zero two four dash one five in the matter of declaring a local disaster requesting a state of wildfire emergency declaration from Morrow County, Oregon.
Second.
The move in second and further discussion. I got a question. This is great. I want to do this. Do you, like, the reason we're doing it now, do you have to wait till the fire is in your, in your county or you can't do it while it's right up against it? Um, could we have done this earlier, I guess?
We could have and I was. We could have. Um, and.
And I'm not trying to falter or anything like that. I just wondered what the, what the process was for maybe for the future.
Yes, um, I think, uh, when Lone Rock was at its peak in our county, uh, would have been an advantage just time to do it. Uh, however, just the way it's spreading and and not dying, at one pay a week or so ago, they thought we got this under control. It's not gonna be harmful. And then the three others along our south line kicked up and I think that's, and the fact that those have all joined in the last twenty-four hours, those three fires have joined. Has escalated the the declaration.
There's no downside or any kind of, not necessarily monetary cost, but any kind of cost, anything to the county to do this, is there? I mean, it wouldn't have, would have cost us, harmed us, you know, any way to to do it earlier. There again, I'm not trying to fault you, Matt. I just wondered what the process was, you know, for future use, you know.
And I asked the sheriff and Steve earlier in the process, we should be declaring it. They said, hold up. And so they had no, no real cost, um, but this does allow us to tap in. One thing we are very cognizant, talking with our, my finance director, Kevin, is, uh, with the declaration and tracking. Are any kind of expenditures on the county side? We wanna, we wanna take a, have your hand in that and it's just the sheriff and the. Emergency manager to make sure we were tracking those and get proper reimbursements on any costs.
Understood. Okay, the move in second is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, next up is, uh. CDA report from Jeff.
So the CDA met yesterday in. Two big items on the agenda was, the first was a vote that reaffirmed the action of March twenty-sixth. Which was as a reminder to transfer the property in Morrow County to the Port of Morrow property in Umatilla County. That motion passed on a three-two vote, two ports, Morrow County voting affirmative. Matilla County and the tribes voted no. The other item that was voted on. It was a motion brought forward by J D Tevey from the tribes to. Enter into mediation, would pause the lawsuit and would pause any land transfers and anything. For like thirty to forty-five days. But, you know, my take on it was. So there wasn't clear on what mediation was going to accept. What did they want to get out of mediation is just rendering into mediation. You know, the advice from the CDA's legal counsel was that the motions that had been taken earlier and then the previous ones are all proper and nothing is illegal about them. Basically, there's not a whole lot of merit to the lawsuit in regards to those motions, so. That motion to enter into mediation failed on a two to three vote. The tribes and Umatilla County voting in favor, the two ports, myself voted against it. And.
Reaffirm your vote. I think that's the correct sense. You know, I heard this whole thing. I think that's the exact way it should have gone.
And and.
Too open headed, wasn't, wasn't called for, you know.
Then the other thing that did happen is that there was a, um, lease brought forward for fifty-five acres. The property and it's going to amount to about forty-two thousand dollars a month for the CDA. For about five years and that was voted on approved.
In which? In which area?
In the Umatilla County.
You said, okay, I said.
Oh, yes. Is that gonna help Greg with these expenses that he helps face?
So what that will do is that as long as the property is entitled in the CBA, then that will go to the CBA and they can do their expenses. When title to that property does transfer to the Port of Umatilla, then the Port of Umatilla will be receiving that money. But, you know, with the pending lawsuit and everything else, besides the other aspects, it's the property closing. It will, um. Determine how long before Port of Umatilla get it. So it could be quite some time before the money would end up going to the Port of Umatilla just. As a lawsuit, again, the timelines for actually closing on the property. But once the property does close, then expenses related to the CDA is my position, unless you two tell me differently, is the responsibility of the landlords.
What went down? How long that meeting lasts? Just approximately.
Hour and a half.
Two hours. So I wasn't even. Okay, uh, I guess that comes to concludes our business. So any other items to come before the commission?